Good evening and welcome. My name is Taylor Kingman. As President of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District, I would like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular Board meeting. I also welcome those of you who are watching the recording of this meeting online or on our public access channel. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of SAISD. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our Board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, items on our agenda this evening have previously been discussed at our earlier pre-agenda Board workshop. As members of the SAISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, we have a public comment item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our Board team on an item not on our action agenda or an action item on the agenda an opportunity to do so. Please provide your name and contact information and the specific topic you wish to address on a public comment form located in the back of the room should you want to speak on an issue on our agenda this evening or not on our agenda this evening. Please listen carefully and comply with the following rules so that we can move through this part of the meeting efficiently. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. The district will provide an official timekeeper. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time. Comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, must be courteous and respectful. Comments are limited to the specific topic you indicated on the form you filled out. Any specific, excuse me, any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee, decision, or operational issue should present that complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. If you have a pending grievance being processed by the district, you will not be able to speak about that grievance during public comment. Also, please understand if you speak to us on an item not on our action agenda that the Board cannot reply to you except to thank you for your comments since the matter has not been posted for discussion. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become part of SAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow Board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones. Again, thank you for being here and for your support of SAISD. We do have a quorum. Ms. Royo is on her way, and she will be joining us briefly, quickly. But we're going to start with our invocation, and Jimmy Hill, pastor at New Hope Church, is going to provide that for us. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. If you would, please join me in a word of prayer. Dear gracious heavenly Father, we come before you tonight, and God, we just give you thanks. We humble ourselves. Your word says that we are to approach your throne of grace with boldness, and we do. God, your word also says if any man lacks wisdom and desires you ought to ask without doubting in this, this evening, God, I ask that you give all of these Board members wisdom, that you'd give the administrators wisdom. God, that every action item on here would be dealt with wisdom that comes from you. God, I pray you bless their families, you bless those administrators, their families that they represent, each teacher, janitorial staff, any employee of SAISD. God, I pray your blessing over them, and we just give you thanks in Jesus' mighty name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have students from Fannin Elementary who are going to help us with the United States and Texas pledges. If anyone will please stand, we have Taylor Carter, Avery Perry, Jerick Johnson, and Brittany Hernandez, who are going to come forward and help us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the unity of Texas, one state under God, one human.
Y'all turn around and wait for pictures. Parents, thank you for bringing them. So we're going to go ahead and move forward with our agenda. Tonight's a fun night. We have lots of recognitions and some real special ones, so I'm going to turn it over to Molly Turk, who's going to start us off.
Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, members of the Board, we are proud to congratulate and honor Ms. Veronica Stoppa, second grade teacher at Glenmore Elementary, for being named the HEB Excellence in Education Lifetime Achievement winner. Ms. Stoppa competed against four other Texas teachers for the title of Lifetime Achievement Elementary winner. The HEB Excellence in Education awards are designed to honor and thank outstanding public school professionals for their dedication and commitment to the students in their area. We have joining us tonight some representatives from HEB. David Rodriguez, store manager; Ellen Godwin, store manager; and Odessa Smith, community coordinator. Thank you, HEB, for your support of public education and recognition of our difference-makers. We congratulate Ms. Stoppa for receiving such a prestigious recognition. We're going to take a quick picture.
I'm just trying to see who, soon Chaz is going to come up and help us with San Angelo ISD Difference Maker Day.
Good evening, Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, and members of the Board. How incredibly appreciative we are, excuse me, and how important it is to have support of SAISD from our community to join in our mission of preparing future-ready graduates. We recognize that it is invaluable for our students and the district to foster relationships within our community. Last month, we had a wonderful showing of the spirit of coming together and of our West Texas generosity while celebrating our SAISD difference-makers. For the third year, we celebrated SAISD Difference Maker Day in San Angelo officially proclaimed by Mayor Gunter on Friday, April 19th, and our community partners showed up in a big way. Today, we extend our thanks and celebrate those community partners for joining us in lifting up our educators and all SAISD difference-makers who make a difference in the lives of more than 13,000 children every day, supporting the future of our community and nation. Community partners started by welcoming SAISD employees outside of the district celebration with delicious breakfast burritos, and then each campus and department had a community partner provide their entire team goodies. We had a record-breaking 41 community partners who joined us on Difference Maker Day by providing a little extra appreciation and gratitude to our almost 2,000 SAISD team members. These community partners answered a call, and we are so thankful to and for each and every one of them. If you please direct your attention to one of the screens and please join us in giving us a round of, in giving them a round of applause to all of our community partners in appreciation of their support of public education, SAISD, and our SAISD difference-makers.
All right, Dr. Moran is going to come up and help us with recognition of CIRC and PCAT awards.
Dr. Moran, Dr. Kingman, Board of Trustees, good evening. On behalf of Workers' Compensation Solutions and in San Angelo ISD, I want to thank you for the opportunity to honor six of our employees who have made outstanding impacts on the district's culture of safety. The CIRC Award Safe Employee Recognition Campaign is part of our Edwards Risk Management Program. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize these individuals. As part of their recognition, the honorees have been awarded a personalized 23-24 Safe Employee Recognition Campaign jacket and shirt. Please help me congratulate for transportation Matt Langford and Jim Bartlett. Sorry, go ahead and come up front. Mr. Garcia, would you like to come take a photo with them? And also this evening, as part of our PCAT award, our Property Casualty Alliance of Texas, our PCAT Bus Driver of the Year for Continued Safety, Benjamin Munoz.
All right, we're going to now turn it over to Molly Turk again for recognition of the San Angelo ISD District Teachers of the Year.
Tonight, we recognized two outstanding difference-maker teachers in San Angelo ISD. During our district celebration in April, we announced Denise Odell, fifth grade teacher at Santa Rita Elementary, as this year's district teacher, elementary teacher of the year, and Eloisa Griffin, English for Speakers of Other Languages teacher at Lincoln Middle School, as this year's secondary teacher of the year. Ms. Odell's colleagues have the following things to say about her in her Teacher of the Year nomination. One of Denise's biggest assets is that she builds skills from the ground up. Her ability to incorporate creative strategies in her lessons allows her students to demonstrate success and perseverance. She finds ways to celebrate even the smallest successes, which makes a big impact on the students she reaches. Ms. Griffin's colleagues have the following things to say about her in her Teacher of the Year nomination. Ms. Griffin is a true relationship builder with students and teachers. She is always ready to go above and beyond for her students. She is the type of teacher you want in every classroom. Her role is beyond being just a classroom teacher. She is a game changer. Ms. Griffin and Ms. Odell will now compete for the Region 15 Teacher of the Year. We wish you both good luck in that process. Please join me in congratulating both of them. And campus leadership, if you're here as well and would like to join for the picture, please do.
All right, we're now going to move, turn it over to Rodney Chant, our Executive Director of Athletics, to recognize several of our Central and Lakeview athletes this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, Board of Trustees. The year is closing down. Last week, we had our mass physicals, had over 1,000 physicals on Wednesday for middle schoolers through high school. It was a fantastic day. We appreciate the Shannon Sports Medicine Clinic, the nurses that are in training at ASU and Howard College that assist us in that, and it will save a lot of effort and time in August when we're trying to get things started, because everybody have taken care of their physicals and their paperwork, and we're going to be ready to go, along with not only athletes but band members as well. And so that was a real positive last Wednesday. So tonight, we're going to honor some teams and individuals that had great achievements in the spring. And first off, I'd like to bring up Derek Allenbar and the Lakeview Track Team.
I'm Coach Derek Allenbar. I would like to introduce the coaches first. We have Coach Rachel Brewster. She is our shot put and discus coach. We have Coach Brian Farrell. He's our pole vault coach. Coach Richard Rowitz, he coaches the mid-distance and long distance. Coach Kittner, she's a head girls' coach, and she coaches long jump and triple jump as well. As you see, we have three athletes here today. Most of the seniors are gone because it's Lakeview's senior picnic, and so we do have two seniors here, but most of them are still swimming at Brown's pool, I assume, so, which is not a bad idea right now. But I'd like to start with our freshman Calvin Whitfield. Calvin was our alternate for the four-by-four-hundred-meter relay. And we have Jalen Chavez, senior. He made it back in time. He was our alternate for the four-by-four-hundred-meter relay. And then Ian Cortez, another senior who made it back. He had the distinguished honor of earning Academic All-State for track and field this year. And so we had 13 total area qualifiers, four regional qualifiers, and we're excited about next year.
Thank you for having us. We have our district qualifiers as our district placement, and then also our regional qualifiers. We have there at the end, Daniel Sessa, him and his partner, Kim Toscano, second place district and regional qualifier. Santiago Martinez, district champion and regional quarterfinalist. Kim Toscano, district second place, regional qualifier. Liz Mota, second place, regional quarterfinalist. Gabby Martinez, district second place, and regional qualifier, regional quarterfinalist. We improved a lot this year, and we are looking forward to next year. This is also my assistant coach, Coach Warner. We are excited about next year and looking forward to improving each year. Thank you.
Next up, we have the Lakeview Baseball Team led by Jace Hall.
Hello, thanks for having us. So to start, I'll introduce the players that are in attendance tonight from left to right. Trace Woods, Justice Gutierrez, Ian Cortez, Academic All-State, Dylan Oranga, Caleb Schumpert, Trevor Reeves, Assistant Coach Max Rivero, and Assistant Coach Mark Arnold. We had five first-team All-District selections. We had three second-team All-District selections. Four Academic All-State baseball players in the classroom as well. I think our team GPA was around 85, 90, so all of them did well in the classroom. It was a great season. We won our first Gold Glove in more than 20 years, and it was a great ride on the way Looking back on the season, the individual accolades and the team accolades are great, but the proudest moment that us and us coaches had was every restaurant we went to, every bus driver said we had the most respectful young gentleman group that they have been around a long time. So that's, that's by far the proudest moment I've had as a coach. Thank you, guys.
Okay, I'm back, sorry. I will say, these girls are absolutely beautiful, so they were definitely worth the wait to get here. I want to thank you all for allowing us to support the athletes and brag on them from both Central and Lakeview today, so thank you very much. This year, we have a very relatively young team. I only have two seniors graduating and over 30 girls on varsity alone. Girls had a very successful year, which included two freshmen, two, four sophomores, four juniors, and two seniors advancing to the area meet in their respective events. The ladies in front of you are the athletes that place in the top four in the area meet and advance to regionals, many of them in multiple events. Maximapoe was the first leg on the four-by-one relay. She's a sophomore. Madison Carroll, freshman, was the second leg on the four-by-one and the four-by-two relay. Annaliese Vasquez, sophomore, anchor leg on both the four-by-one and four-by-two relay. And Skylin Carroll, who's a junior, was the third leg on both the four-by-one, four-by-two relay, as well as being a regional finalist in the 800-meter, placing sixth at the regional meet. All, well, there is five, we're missing one, but all five of these girls will be back to compete for the maidens next year, so expect big things from these four, five girls. It's been a pleasure to be your coach, and I'm already looking forward to next season, and thank you all. These are my maiden regional qualifiers.
Good evening, everyone. This is Clarissa Pinha. She's a sophomore. She ended up getting out of district this year, out of our whole team. We ended up tying for fourth, but Clarissa finished in, finished tied for third. She represented the Cats at regionals in Grand Prairie against the tough region that we're in, and she got her feet wet and ended up finishing in the top 60 out of a very, very strong field, and we hope to be back next year. Next year, we'll have, Clarissa will lead the way as a junior, and we'll have four sophomores. So we'll be a very young team, but also looking to compete. But anyways, thank you all very much. But anyways, thank you all very much.
Next up, we have the Lady Cat Track Team led by Stephen Pope.
Thank you all for having us this evening. We're excited to be here. I'm Steve Pope, I'm the head girls track coach at Central. And I'd like to introduce you to our regional qualifiers. We had seven girls qualify in five events, two relay teams. I'll start with the individual events. I guess, girls, when I call your name, raise your hand so we know who you're talking about. First off, in the 100 meters, we have senior Jace Jackson. She was also voted our outstanding runner of the year during our banquet the other day. In both the long jump and high jump, we have freshman Sydney Crooks. Sydney actually placed fifth place in the high jump at the regional meet, clearing 5'5". And she won our outstanding field event award at our banquet. Our two relay teams, the first one, the 400-meter relay. Our first leg was sophomore Amari Vincent. Second leg, our senior Jace Jackson. Third leg, around the curve sophomore Jada Ennis. And our fourth leg, junior Emily Felton Seiler. And for our 800-meter relay team, again, leading off was Amari Vincent. On our second leg, we had senior Taylee Self. Taylee's teammates voted her as the Holland Award winner at her banquet. Third leg, another sophomore, Madison Rios. And again, on the anchor, Emily Felton Seiler. So the girls have a lot to be proud of, I'm proud of them, and thank you for inviting us here this evening. Thanks.
Oh, go, go, follow him, follow him, follow him. There you go, shake hands, shake hands. Next up, we have the Central Bobcat Boys Track Team led by Jake Myers.
Thank you all for having us. We're very excited to be here. This is our boys' regional qualifiers. We qualified in the 400-meter relay and ultimately beat our time from last year, running a 42-1 flat. Very proud of these young men. They've worked very hard throughout the year. First, we have sophomore, our third leg Sutton Cole. Junior, our anchor, Peter Kagania. And our two seniors, Andres Diaz and Colton Gossett. Very proud of these young men, especially these two seniors. This was the fourth year in a row they qualified for Regionals. So it was very special to see those two young men fulfill their dream of making Regionals all four years they were in high school. For these two fine young men right here, they will have a very bright future and I'm very excited to see what they will do. Thank you all.
Next up, we have the Central Tennis Team led by Brent Abilis.
All right, thank you all. First, thank you all for having us. It's always an honor to have these players recognized for all their hard work. During our long season, our long tennis season, you know, this year they moved the dates back and so we went from February, I mean, the end of January, all the way through May. So it's been a long year, but it's been a great year. Thank you to our admin for allowing and supporting us to go far and wide to all these tennis tournaments throughout the state to participate at that high level. That's what makes us better and for us to compete in 6A, those are the things that we have to do. So thank you all for the support, the facilities, everything that y'all do for us. We really do appreciate it and thank you all. Thank you to the parents and the community for allowing us to go and do all that. Your support and effort, your time and your gas is essential to our program. So thank you all for the dedication, all the dedication and the snacks. Thank you, parents, for the snacks. Shout out, thank you Coach Weaver. She is our assistant coach new this year, came to us from Prosper and Metroplex last year, has been a godsend and asset to our program. I'm not going to say I've never been this organized, but I get to play off of that, so we have never been as organized in our life and everything is great. So this speech will probably be filed away in a folder. At this time, I'd like to recognize our players, our 6A regional qualifiers. First up, we have Kirsten Robles and Mason Elliott. If y'all just step forward, please, guys. They are the 6A district runner-up and they were regional qualifiers. Next up, we have Carly King and Brady Stewart. They were the 6A district champions and regional quarterfinalists. Carly King, step forward Carly. Carly King is also an Academic second-team All-State recipient for the fall and spring tennis season. Next up, we have Hannah Harton and Adithi Padarala. They are the 6A district champions and regional fourth-place finishers. Before they step back, they have made it the furthest in my six years of being here, since the Sneeman sisters. They have made it the furthest anyone has gone at Regionals in 6A. They beat the Allen girls, split sets, and then we played Plano West, the number-two seed. And while they may have been better than us on paper, the girls fought and we split sets. Then we had the momentum going into the third set and lightning delay for an hour and then we had to move indoors and I think that got the best of us. But the girls competed and they did well. And we came up short the next day to South Lake Carroll for fourth place and third place. But next year, they're taking three to state and we'll be there. And thank you, thank you, girls. And next up, I'd just like to recognize Addison Cole. She was our third-place girls' singles and she was a regional alternate. Sorry, you're a big third grader. Anyways, thank you all so much. Thank you, everybody, for what y'all do. Please give them another round, thank you.
Next up, we have the Lady Cat Central Girls State Gymnastics Team led by Tony Walker.
Good evening. First of all, thank you for allowing me to introduce these lovely young ladies to you. It's always an honor to be able to do so. This is also one of their favorite nights of the entire year because I make them wear a dress and their hair down. And we're knocking it out twice this week. We have banquet tomorrow night. First of all, I'd like to introduce a 23, 24 Lady Cats gymnastics team to you. They are the 23rd consecutive district champions in a row here. 23rd, yeah. 23rd consecutive regional team champions and continue to be the reigning state champions since 2019. By becoming the 2024 state champions and they did it in remarkable fashion, being in second place the first day and coming back and killing it and taking it home. So they did a wonderful job. San Angelo will be very proud of them. I would like to introduce my ladies to you, starting on the far end there, with our freshman class, Ms. Michael Mock. It's always good to have one freshman. They kind of, they cycle in every four or five years and I don't have many leaving when they go. Sophomores Ava Bedard, Gracie Foster, Allison Garnett. Let me talk about Allison for a minute here. She's a regional bronze medalist on uneven bars and placed in the top 10 on floor at Regions and was the first-team all-region. Ms. Addison McDuffie. And Ms. Steely Young finishes out our sophomore class. And Steely was the regional top 10 on beam and second-team all-region and placed ninth on the beam at state championships and was named to the second-team all-state. As a sophomore, that's a good thing. Juniors, okay, Ms. Kara Baker. She has a list. Kara was district champion on bars, beam, and the all-around and was named first-team all-district. She was the regional champion on bars, floor, and the all-around. She's a silver medalist on beam and the bronze medalist on vault and named to first-team all-region. She is state top 10 on vault, bars, beam, and it's difficult to do the next one. She was the repeat state champion on floor exercise and the bronze medalist in the all-around and named to first-team all-state. Next is Ms. Kalen Cad. And Kalen was the district silver medalist on beam and was named to first-team all-district. Next one, Daniela De La Cruz. Daniela was regional bronze medalist on beam and the top 10 on vault and bars and she was named to first-team all-region and was the 2024 state silver medalist on balance beam and named to first-team all-state. And last but not least, junior is Ms. Haley George. Next, I have a great senior class and I'm sad about losing them. They're phenomenal girls, not only out there in the gym, but in the classroom as well. First of all, I'm going to start with Marielle Hartskey. We have a lot of names for Marielle, I'll call her Mary Ann. She's top 10 at district on vault, bars, and floor and named to second-team all-district. She was top 10 at region on vault and the top five on floor and named first-team all-region. Marielle is also the salutatorian for this year's graduating senior class. Next, we have McKinley Nile. McKinley was the district bronze medalist on vault, silver medalist on bars and was a district champion on floor. She was named to first-team all-district. She tied for the regional bronze medalist on vault, silver medalist on bars and tied for silver on floor and was the top 10 in the all-around and named to first-team all-region. At state, she placed on the top 10 on bars, top five on floor and was named to the first-team all-state. And McKinley is number three in her senior class. Next, we have Ms. Caroline Still. Caroline was the district vault champion, silver medalist on bars and floor and named to first-team all-district. She was the regional vault champion, silver medalist on floor, bronze medalist in the all-around and top five on bars and named first-team all-region. At state, she was a top-five finisher on vault, silver medalist on bars, top 10 in the all-around and named to first-team all-state and is number five in her senior class. And last but not least, we have Ms. Freddie Von Rosenberg. Freddie was district honorable mention on beam and she placed in the top 20 at state on the balance beam and she is number eight in her graduating class. I have a bunch of smart girls. They really did represent San Angelo and Central High School very well. You would have been very proud of them. I'm proud of them. Every day they walk in the gym. I have a great group of girls and I have great leadership that just kind of carries that on down to the freshmen. So thank you for 57 years ago thinking, "Ah, gymnastics program would be good for this school district." I greatly appreciate it, thank you.
And last and certainly not least, is the Bobcat Boys Gymnastic Team led by Karen Errett.
Been doing this for 31 years and I still haven't grown enough to. Always had to pull that thing down. All right, thank you all for having us. We appreciate it and we couldn't do the things that we do without all of y'all. We very much appreciate it. This is your 2024 Bobcat Gymnastics Team. They're district champions, regional champions, and we placed sixth at state. And that's the best. We get a little better each year, so we're shooting to be up there where the girls are. It would sure be nice to do what we did in 2015 and both boys and girls win. We've got to work harder to pull up our end of the deal. I'd like for these guys, as I mentioned their names, step forward. I'm going to start with our freshman, Aiden Freeman. Thanks, Aiden. Next, we have Carson Edwards. He was second-team all-district. Sophomores, Nick Atchison. He was honorable mention, all-district. Carson Freeman. Ryder Restman. Kayden Stewart, second-team all-region. Brady Stewart. First-team all-district, second-team all-region. He would have his blue shirt on, but we've been turning in equipment and he's stuck it in his bag. So we're okay. I said it's not a big deal. Junior Eli Soto. Eli, first-team all-district and all-region. Our seniors Tyler Duncan, first-team all-district and all-region. Our last senior Logan Kipfer. He was first-team all-district.
Congratulations. Thank you. 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 Thank you all. Appreciate y'all. Thank you. 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 Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[761.32][761.32][S01.12][S01] Hello, my name is Virgil Passetti, concerned dad. As you know, my son came and spoke to y'all last week and told you his concerns and same concerns we've had all year about the STEM's aide yelling at him, scolding at him, and not letting him use the STEM stuff. And here we are two years later. Where's the difference maker? Who's going to make a difference? You know, the governor of Texas makes $153,000 a year. So our superintendent makes twice that. Deputy makes more than that. Almost there makes more than that. All this money we spend and you can't keep an aide from yelling at my son after two years. You know, I listened to the preacher earlier and he said, you know, "Let the wisdom come down on y'all." But if you're not willing to receive the wisdom, then what good is it? Y'all don't do anything different. Y'all don't reach out. You have a fifth grader come up here and pour his heart and soul out to you and no one can bother to reach out to him? You know how much that takes for a kid to come up here and talk to y'all? It's very intimidating. And then what's the feedback he gets? Zero. So what does a fifth grader think? They don't care. Your actions are stronger than your words. You're not allowed to say anything to me, but y'all could take action, but you choose not to. So please quit saying you're a difference maker. I heard last week that McGill's going to be late. We're not going to have it till December. When I used to work in the real world, we'd have had a meeting and they said, "Okay, who's getting fired?" But here, we're going to have our communication department. They're not going to say anything about it. What's going to happen to those kids because that school's three months late? Where's the corrective action for that? Where's the preventative action? Does anybody even know why that happened? Why don't we put it out there for the public? Little birdie told me that possibly y'all might be getting a little visit from someone. And I think it was Ronald Reagan said that, "I'm here from the government and I'm here to help." And that's probably the scariest thing you could ever hear. And apparently, y'all might be hearing that very soon. So I hope y'all take that serious. You've ignored the parents. You have ignored the students. You do everything you can to not have any transparency. If you put in any kind of FOIA request, you do, I mean, it goes all the way to the Texas Attorney General and through your lawyers before you release the information. But the good thing about the government is you can't say no. So, you know, maybe we should put that out. If we truly have a problem, the first part of the problem is to say that we have a problem, not to pretend like it's not going to happen. But y'all can keep pretending and we'll see what happens. Thank you. And Ms. Passetti, I also think you signed up to speak on a specific topic for this evening?
Uh, the other ones that y'all are going to vote for.
Okay, that's now as well? If you want to have a specific topic you would like to speak on?
I'll speak on all of them.
Which topic would you like to speak on?
Well, the, let me put my glasses on. Okay. Uh, the children's food and the bond.
Okay.
So is it three minutes per or three minutes total?
Three minutes per.
Okay. Um, on the children's nutrition department, I think it was like a $300,000 savings, but it was just because we're getting rid of some things that weren't needed. I think there needs to be some transparency there. Can you please tell the parents what those things are that aren't needed? You know, you've got a $400,000 budget for a communication department. Please communicate. It scares me that just someone comes up here and says, "Miraculously, we saved $300,000 even though we're in a time of huge inflation and nobody's going to notice because it's things nobody needs." I don't trust y'all, so please tell us what you're getting rid of. Can you reset my three minutes, please? So I see that we're going to do a vote on RFQ or you've already gone through the RFQ, so you're going to vote on getting a bond consultant. You know, I've been talking about leadership for a long time here. And leadership in the building, metaphor to the building would be like the foundation. We have problems in this district. You're not willing to admit it. You can't fix something simple after two years. Everybody that I talk to tries to obstruct me, run me around in circles. The grievance process is a joke. Your FOIA requests are a joke. Y'all do everything you can to keep me running in a circle when you could have fixed the problem in like 10 minutes.
Can you please keep it on bond planning services?
Yeah. So you need a really strong leadership before you can go and ask the community for, I'm guessing, low side 50 million, high side 100. All our taxes are going up and you're going to come and ask for money and you can't even handle the business you're doing now. Something has, we need some difference makers. We need something different to happen here before the community's going to trust you with that kind of money. So maybe before we spend the money on the consultant, we need to, you know, maybe bring someone in and say, "Why is it that our leadership team are doing these things? Why is it there's this distrust with the public?" But you'd rather just spend the money on this consultant and try to push it through. And I think it's not a good, you know, there's a lot more problems that the kids need that money, not some consultant. So, you know, fix some of the little issues, the low-hanging fruit. Show us a little olive leaf. You know what? We heard you and we're actually going to do something. Build a little trust instead of just shutting parents and students down. You know, just because you're there doesn't mean that we don't understand what's going on and that you're smarter than us. You know, just treat us with respect. If a fifth grader comes up here and says, "There's a problem at a school," go look. Why would he make that up? Why would he come up here in front of y'all and ask that? So before you go asking for more money, to go ask someone to show you how to get the money, help the kids first.
Thank you. We also have, next on public comment, we have Brenda Gunter. Topic is Central on Oaks. Come on forward.
First of all, I want to say it was a privilege being here tonight and seeing all these kids get recognized for their participation in the athletics that they all contributed to. What a great group of people and great leadership in your schools to produce these kinds of results. So thank you for supporting the athletic community and letting them achieve their greatest dreams. Thank you for that. I'm here to talk about the buildings on Oak Street. San Angelo has lost much, much of its history. Old homes of those pioneer citizens who built the country and the county and the town. Buildings which housed businesses that kept the town growing through two world wars and an economic depression and schools where educated generations of future citizens. They are gone forever. If walls could talk, if the walls were still standing, they would tell us of lives lived, lessons learned, and the much-needed hope for survival in the future. The old San Angelo Junior College is almost 100 years old. It is, by the way, the same age as City Hall and the auditorium. Imagine if we tore it down or sold it off to the best bidder. It is a structural senior citizen and like human senior citizens, it has lived a valuable life and still has much to offer to this community. Old buildings and old people need not be considered expendable when their experience is a beacon for future generations. It is not too late for the college to become something even greater than it is today. It must live beyond fading memories, old newspaper clippings, and photographs. Please consider what destroying more San Angelo history will mean in the coming years. How can we have a future if we have no memory of the past from which it came? Thank you.
Thank you. And we're going to move forward with our agenda. We're going to make a little switch. So Dr. Gomez, if you'll come up and give us an update on Central on Oaks and then we'll move back to the regular order.
Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, and members of the board. So I'm going to start off with some simple pictures here because depending on your last time at Central on Oaks, what you think of might have varied. So this current picture is the front view of Central on Oaks at present time with the awning and just the main entrance. Now, this picture captures what is referred to as San Angelo Junior College, what we refer to within the district as the Annex Building, the historical portion of the building. But when we talk about an update, as we've discussed, moving students from Oaks to Maine to increase instructional minutes for our students so they're not being shuttled back and forth, to cut down on transportation, and also due to just some real plumbing and sewer issues that we do have within the cafeteria and some of the buildings there. What I'm going to talk to you is really about next year and the portions of the building that we'll be using that have to do with our career and technical education classes specifically. So with this map and the aerial view, we're talking about the portion of the campus that are on Magdalen Street specifically. So the white building, we'll be using that building. And then from the parking lot, the blacktop, not the building that's, if you were to drive straight in the parking lot, that's the cafeteria. But the building right to the right of that, that's only two areas of Central on Oaks that the district will be using for CTE. Just want to make sure that y'all can see that. So we would not be using the main building if you were to go to the main entrance or the annex. Just that outer white building and that building to the left of the cafeteria. So specifically, would only be CTE courses there in the area of health science, construction, welding. You know, in education, we like a lot of acronyms, so we refer to it as OSAT, Occupational Safety and Environmental Technology and Animation. As you all are aware, the district currently pays rental fees for West Texas Training Center. That's where we currently house all of these courses. So by moving to a space that we own ourselves, we are cutting down those rental fees. These classes are double-blocked. When I talk about saving on busing, the students would be there two periods, so you're not shuttling back and forth every period. Students in these courses would be there first and second if they had the classes, third and fourth, and sixth and seventh. You would have approximately 450 students there all day from both high schools. The only period students would not be occupying the building and the space I explained would be fifth period because that's the teachers' conference period. And that's just a general overview of the space we would be using at Oaks next year. Are there any questions about just that general overview? Okay, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Erin Benoy from the city.
Thank you, Dr. Kingman. Thank you, Dr. Moran and trustees. Thank you for allowing the city to come and present some ideas that we have for the historic overlay of the main, what we call the main campus or what y'all call the Annex right now. And you see the beautiful buildings, got the great Georgian columns and the beautiful brick. Again, as Mayor Gunter mentioned, getting close to 100 years old, was designed back in 1927, '28 and opened in 1929. You see the red outline of just that building that, if I had as good of an overhead as Dr. Gomez had, that shows where the smoke stack, if you will, at the back, that is the back portion and then coming forward, that we would overlay just that main building. We're not looking at overlaying the entire property or the entire structure itself. We are looking at just the historical structure because we know that y'all still have needs and uses for those programs. And this is just a facade historical preservation is what it is. It does not prevent the building from being used in any other way. It can be used in multiple ways. The zoning actually allows different things to be done there. Obviously, schools and institutional items like that are allowed. See if I can, don't mess this up. Again, here's just some of the timeline. These will be presented to our Design and Historic Commission in June for them to make a recommendation to our city council in early July of whether to extend our historic downtown district over this property. There's also another property that the school does not own that we're looking at extending it over, but just wanted to talk to you guys about the school specific. It does have a very rich history. It has gone through many educational uses throughout the year and still is a great, from the outside, from our perspective, a functional facility. Obviously, there are some items, as Dr. Gomez mentioned, that probably need to be upgraded at some point and those all cost money and we understand that. But we do want to echo that, you know, we do have a lot of our senior buildings in our town that are starting to go missing. Here's just some of those historical pictures. If you look at that bottom right corner, that was actually one of the design drawings back in 1927. That was much more Art Deco back then and they changed to go with a more traditional Georgian style instead. It was very interesting that we were able to find that in the archives. Very interesting building. I think it would be even more interesting today to see what it would look like. But you see those big, great columns and that just, it just really speaks authority and what it could be for our downtown as an entrance building. It always has been an entrance building to our downtown and we really do want to preserve that. So here's just an overhead and you see those red triangles. Those are areas in where buildings have gone missing. have gone missing. They have been demolished, that were historical buildings for various reasons, for various time periods. But we continue to lose buildings in this part of town that are significant to our history, to our culture, and to San Angelosans. And we really do think that these are very critical to keep for our history, for our students of the future, like all of those athletes that were here today and all the other students that y'all teach. They want to know our history too, so they can learn how we became and how we can continue as San Angelo. With that, there's different things that what we would call as being the historic overlay, that's called a certificate of appropriateness, to look back and say, all right, when a change on the outside of the building happens, what needs to take place? Our goal is to try to preserve the integrity and the look of the building the best we can, usually with as historic as we can. There can be times that modern practices come into place and come in and still have the look of the old, but maybe a modern material. Technology does a lot of great things to help us in those areas. You can see just the exterior rehab of the building, things like that. Things on the inside of the building, they do not have to stay historic. You do not have to have a historic sewer system. You can have an updated sewer system. So don't think that you have to have anything old on the inside of the building, although I'm sure it has some great character in there as well. We are looking at preserving the outside character. There are many, many things that can be done administratively so that we can try to expedite the process. And I think the first thing that can be done there is just better communication from the city to the school district to work with your team better so that they understand what we would be looking for. I recognize that as something that we should do better from the city side, and so we want to work with them and your team better so that we can find ways to do things administratively so that it may not even take the 10-day period. If you've got emergency things that have happened, we will find a way to work with you. But those 10-day administrative things, we just try to look at the character. We're looking at things that are maybe like-for-like, maybe safety things, items like that, that we want to work with you to try to make sure that they happen and get the character of the building back to a safe status. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions that I can about the process or any concerns. Again, this is going to go to our Design and Historic Review Commission in June. It'll be the third Thursday of June. I don't recall the exact date off the top of my head, but the third Thursday of June, that is usually at 10 o'clock in the morning at City Hall at 72 West College Avenue.
First of all, thank you for being here.
Yes, sir.
Board team, any questions? So I have a question. You spoke of facade, and then you spoke of building. I just want to make sure I understand which exactly, is it only what is front-facing, or is it that entire building backwards? Anything connected to the facade, I guess, is my question.
The, and I'll go back maybe to, maybe that image right there. You see the red rectangle. It is all four sides, if you will. Obviously, we're going to look at the front of that facade as being the most critical. Now, there are items and important architectural items on the sides, but I think that gives us some area that we need to sit down with your team, with the school district and say, all right, if you're needing to make a change, what is the change, and how can we help make that change come through? But obviously, that front facade is very iconic. That's where we would have the most strict reading of, all right, it should go back to as original as it can if there was something that needed to be changed out. Now, I do know one item of concern at times for school districts is security. And is there, you know, can we put fencing in front? Do we have a secure access? We want to work with the school district on those items. That would not impact this building or the facade, per se. And so we would be able to work through those things to make that happen for security if that becomes a structure that needs to be more secured at some point in the future. Does that answer your question, Dr. Kingman?
Yes.
One question, Mr. Benoit. Go back one more slide. There's a mention of lighting fixtures in one of those slides here. I'm assuming you're talking about the exterior lighting fixtures?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
I'm not sure what there's.
That is correct. If there was any exterior lighting fixtures, I'm not sure that this building had any. They may have security lighting now that we wouldn't, I mean, if you needed to replace those for whatever reason, then we would allow that to be replaced.
Only exterior, though?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
But just to clarify, so if we want to do any of those things to the building, we would have to get, like, basically authorization from the city?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
So, okay.
I wanted to ask about, there was something on the list that there was about temporary structures no longer, or can't be in place for more than 30 days. Is that just in front of the Annex, or is that on the entire property? Because like, can be seen from the front? You know what I'm saying?
Correct.
I was thinking of like, the canopy that's there. Would that be something that would be a problem?
So that's where we've talked with the school district once and said, well, let's try to make this a little more common sense and look at just that particular structure, not the entire campus grounds.
Okay.
Because we know that there are times that you need to move in different things, whether it's a canopy, whether it's an event, could be even temporary classrooms at some point, that wouldn't impact this actual building. And so we would not be opposed to that at this time. We are just looking at the integrity of that building and trying to preserve that building itself.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, I understand I wouldn't be opposed to it this time, but would it require permission to do it?
No, it would not. As long as it's on the outside of that rectangle, we would not require an application for that, for the Design and Historic Review Commission.
Any further questions, Mr. Benoit? And just as far as timeline, for this to happen at any point in time, I understand it's coming to the meeting, June 20th, but process in general, when you're adding something to the historic overlay, traditionally, what has been the timeline for that?
Well, we've only, it's been, we did one historic overlay through the downtown in 2021. That took about three to four months through that whole process. They did have a public meeting at that time. I'm not sure actually really why the decision was to leave this building out because the gymnasium, it already has that over it.
Yeah.
And that property. Not sure why this property was left out at that time. Typically, any rezoning, and this is what we would call a rezoning, is about an eight-week process for the city to rezone any property. We certainly want to hear feedback, and we certainly want to do the right thing.
Any, but in short, like, in eight weeks, we, if the city wanted to do something, it would be true to say that if the district was still in planning purposes of what that campus would, we'd be looking to do, we know what we're doing with it next year. We don't know what we're doing with it beyond that at this point, other than probably continuing CTE in those two spaces. The historic overlay could happen within eight weeks of any point in time that that happens?
Yes, that is true.
Okay. Any other questions?
This may be a silly question, but there's no additional funds you get for being a part of this historic.
That's a great question. If you, the school, and I'm going to say nonprofit, but not truly nonprofit, but there are tax incentives for other structures in town that are historically overlaid, even private structures. Say, if your home was historically overlaid, there's actually a property tax break, and then there's also renovation tax dollars that can be, that can go towards things. So if this property was owned in the future, maybe by a different business or different entity, there is the potential that they could have some tax breaks because of the historic overlay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Benoit? Chris? Thank you for being here. We appreciate it. It allows us to kind of start getting our heads wrapped around it all. So I appreciate all that you all have worked and the communication you all have had with our board and our administrative team. So thank you all.
Yes, thank you guys very much. Y'all have a great night.
All right. So now we're going to move back to A, which is Construction Update with Jason Henry.
Thank you for having us tonight. I have Alan Wolfe from Park Hill Architects to discuss our major construction projects at both McGill and Fannin.
Thank you, Mr. Henry, Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, members of the board. And I'm fired up tonight. What an absolutely fantastic way to cap off the year with your students. That's a ton of hardware, and so we're glad to be here tonight to see part of that, and to give you an update on our construction at McGill and at Fannin. So just to give you, I was out last week, had a chance to talk to William. He's the superintendent there on the McGill site. They are doing fantastic. They're actually ahead of schedule. They're doing a wonderful job. Really want to compliment their professionalism about scheduling and getting inspections and things like that. The big things coming up as of today, they were supposed to get in all the glass, the high window area glass, the Claire store that lets in the natural light for the kiddos. They have brick on site. They were getting an exterior inspection last week so that they could begin bricking in the steel frame areas. You know, they've already done some brick on the backside for the kitchen. So it's really looking good in there. They're getting drywall. Lots of guys in there Wednesday doing drywall work and plumbers working as well. They've done a really good job of trying to conceal the plumbing and being neat with all their electricals. So it's going to give a great look when the kids get in there. I'm really excited, and excited for the staff as well. Oh, thank you. I got carried away. All right. So you can kind of see, I think you guys have this also in your packet. Here's some pictures. As you can see, the brickwork that's going on there. There's another picture. They were doing HVAC units a week before last, so that was really exciting to see. They got everything in the dry, so that's what's allowed, the drywall. Got the same drywall subcontractor on both Fannin and McGill, and they're really doing a good job staffing the project. Here's a picture of the inside. You can see down the hallway, and the cafeteria is looking really good. I think you're going to be the difference in cafeteria when you get in there versus the existing cafeteria. I think you're really going to, it's really going to help size-wise. Okay, over at Fannin, if you've been by Fannin, it's actually got some of the exterior windows in it now, which is really great. The brick is on site. They too were doing the exterior inspection so that they could begin the brickwork. Inside, they were doing drywall and electrical work. The drywall, the sound attenuation bats go in, so that helps make sure the learning environment is great, and the kids can hear what the instructors are doing without any of the cross chatter from across the hall. And so the biggest thing now outside the building is to get that paving going. So you've probably seen the curb and gutter out there, but that's the next push. Here's a good picture of the guys putting in the soundbats. And you can see they're getting the cable trays neatly arranged so that when it gets to August, we can get technology moving in there. And there's the guys up on the scaffold as well. It's really going to be great. I'm excited. I'm excited for Dana and her staff, and also everybody over at McGill as well. So any questions I can answer? Here's a little picture of the site work. You can see, that's really going to hopefully be a difference-maker over there and a game-changer to have more drop-off area. You know, that area off of Wilson is pretty small, so we're excited for a little more drop-off there. Any questions I can answer?
Just a few clarifications. So Fannin, the Annex is on schedule to be opened in August.
Yes, sir.
And McGill is still following the construction plan, which we've had since we started.
That is correct.
Which was to be done in December.
Yes, that is correct. I think it's, you know, when you drive by and see it, how far they're coming along, they've really made tremendous progress. And the contractor, in this case, is Lee Lewis, is really, you know, they actually started construction a couple months after Fannin, and they're, you can see they're kind of at the same stage. The big thing at McGill is getting electrical switchgear, which is a long lead time. In the case of Fannin, that capacity was already available in the existing switchgear. So that's kind of the difference there. So there's, we knew that. Contractor knew that, and they've been working as quickly as they can, and I think they've done a great job.
So just for clarification for our public, when you said we were ahead of schedule, we're ahead of schedule from our December construction plan, once we started?
Yeah, they are, right. We're still, I mean, that's the moving day. We don't want to shift during, but yes, they are making tremendous strides. They're a little bit ahead of schedule, and I'm pleased with what I saw last week.
And just under Construction Update as well, Dr. Moran, all McGill staff and Austin staff have been aware of the plan for us to move without the construction being finished, and the parents are also aware of that.
Right. Back in January, I met with the construction company and the architects, and we talked about the timeline, and we communicated that with the board. In February, we met with the McGill staff, with the Austin staff, and they've done a fantastic job, by the way, of working the last three months to plan and prepare for an opening at McGill in just the existing facilities. And then next December, at the break, we're going to expand into the newly constructed areas and just spread our wings there. But the two staffs and the students have already been working together, visiting campuses, doing activities together. It's been a wonderful experience, and we're really excited for them.
Thank you. Any other questions for Park Hill regarding construction updates?
Dr. Kingman and Dr. Moran, I'd also like to recognize Dr. Brandon, Mr. Henry, and the moving crew because as part of this process, all of our staff, we've provided boxes and materials to all of these classrooms and departments that are moving. So all the McGill teachers, all of the Austin teachers, even the Fannin teachers, the Oaks teachers, all of the teachers involved in these moves, our staff give them the materials and we move them. So all of this is happening at the current time to make these coordinated efforts smooth.
Thank you, Dr. Gomez. And it's not part of your update, but do you, Sousa, you have, are we on schedule there as well?
Yes, yes. And we've been working with Dr. Brandon and Mr. Henry as well on that.
Perfect. All right. Any other questions? All right. Next, we're going to move forward with Dr. Moran regarding the reorganization of the Department of Curriculum and Instruction.
All right. Board, you all are fully aware of what's going on because we've been talking about it for a couple of months now, but I wanted to just give you a quick update, and really for the public's sake, just to talk about some of the shifts that are going to happen July 1 and beyond. So the question is, why would we reorganize? And the answer's pretty simple. We want to, we aspire to provide more focused academic support for teachers pre-K to 12, and really realize greater student achievement. And the focus of this is to give support for our core teachers, pre-K to 12. The board is aware that we didn't have any support really for those high school teachers in the way of instructional coaches. And so what we're doing is, and you've got some slides there to look at, but the big picture essentially is that we'll divide the organization into two houses, Academics and Finance and Operations. Academics will be led by Dr. Gomez, and Finance and Operations by Dr. Brandon. But the instructional coaches will be grouped into teams. You heard about that last Monday night. They'll serve specific campuses in the core areas. And then we'll have one administrator supervising the elementary schools, whereas right now, we're divided. We've got several different administrators over several different groups of campuses. This will help us become more consistent and efficient. So Dr. Self will oversee the elementary principals and schools, while Mr. Colmbach will have secondary, and then Shelley Huddleston will have that grouping of instructional coaches and coordinators to support all campuses. Again, July 1 is our target date for reorganization, and as you look at the, you can advance the slides, but the board's got those in hard copy. You'll see one half of the house, Academics, and the other Finance and Operations. And we'll move HR under Finance and Operations. Dr. Brandon will take that on. And then we'll do a little bit of work with our Data Services and Student Services to make sure those are divided up and operating efficiently. So we're excited about this. The team's really worked it, and we've got consensus on our team. This will actually help us to provide the instructional coaching across the district, but also an assistant principal at every elementary school, whereas we do not have that now. And we're moving from 17 elementaries to 15, and because of our declining enrollment, we'll be looking at if there are any possibilities of consolidating even more in the years to come. But this will help us to become more efficient. It's more and more challenging to provide meaningful pay increases to meet inflation, rising cost of healthcare and property insurance. But one way we can do that is to become more efficient and lean as an organization. So we're excited about this, and I'll entertain any questions from the board.
Any board comment? I know one thing that has been talked about in previous meetings is the fact that this allows for allows for a clear chain of responsibility for everyone. And I think that's a great piece for whether it's principals, assistant principals, instructional coaches to know exactly where and who they're reporting to. And allows for you and on the academic side, you or Dr. Gomez, to then report to the right person below y'all. And so, and the same with Dr. Brandon on the finance and operations side. Make sure I called the house the right thing. But, so I, I do think that that sort of accountability is good for our district. And I want to reiterate the fact that as we look to do this, the key is, you know, one of the things I didn't mention just now, but all of a sudden, we're gonna have an instructional coach in every subject matter over an elementary school. And I think that's important because what we need really is, we need to figure out how to make differences in all these kids' lives. And I think that's, this is moving in that direction. So thank y'all as a board team or as administrative team for working on this to get it, to create that. So thank you.
You bet. And one final comment is, we believe this will really go a long ways in growing our own teachers. New teachers in the classroom, they need all the support they can get. And if we can just push our resources towards those teachers and, and give them more support that's focused, we'll feel better about it. And it's, the military calls it economies of force. And that's one way to look at it.
Will the, the ICs know before they leave for summer what schools they'll be over?
So the, the team is currently working on that. I don't know that we've made any announcements yet. But Shelley, I'll turn it over to you.
We actually have one-on-one meeting set up for them for tomorrow morning. So we'll meet with every IC and talk to them about their content area, their team of schools they'll support and their pod. And we've also are giving that information to our principals. So that's been going on all week. And then we have further meetings next week with them.
Good. I just know that would be like a good thing to know before I left for summer. Thanks.
Ms. Duncan, I want to clarify. I'm sorry, Dr. Mills. That's for elementary specifically because elementary will be in the pods. The configuration for secondary is a little different.
Right.
But we are meeting on secondary later this week as well. Just wanted to clarify because the elementary and secondary structure is a little bit different.
Right.
The individual meetings tomorrow are with elementary specifically.
Yeah.
It's important to have those conversations one-on-one, as Shelley was saying. That's, you'd want to hear that face-to-face.
Right, exactly.
And I'm sure we mentioned it, but I just wanted to clarify, there were no additional positions made. This was purely just reorganization.
So we took the existing instructional coaches and through the process of some of those choosing to go back to the classroom or whatever, we've actually reduced down, which gives us the latitude to add those assistant principals. And then there is a, a data, what do we end up calling it?
Academic data coordinator.
There we go. An academic data coordinator. It's, it's a person that's going to crunch data and provide support. But yes, to your point, it's, we're not adding positions. We're using existing resources, retooling and reforming so that we can get more out of our people.
Any further board comment on that update? All right, we're gonna move forward then. And Dr. Brandon is gonna give us a facility assessment and bond planning services update.
Good evening again. As we look for possible facility changes in the future, a big part of that, and before we move to some sort of facility planning committee in the future, is we have to assess what those facilities look like. The district has already done a great job of that with seven of the elementaries. Those studies coming back from 2008 and 2014. We have a repository of information that would go along with those. This assessment would not only do a desk audit of those facilities to make sure what's been updated or replaced in that time, as well as if there are still issues on those campuses, Park Hill would assess what has been changed and what still needs to happen and then update the pricing. Then along with that, all other facilities in the district. So when you look at this, all secondaries, maintenance, facilities, child nutrition, so that, you know, when we talk about these things, it's really about the full gamut of the district. Where are the needs and how can we address those? Mr. Wolf is gonna address any questions that you might have of what that assessment looks like and what their team will be responsible for, both through the facility assessment and into bond planning.
Thank you, Dr. Brandon. Again, Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, and members of the board. Great to be back with you again. I, I wanted what you have. I know there's an action sheet in the packet or an information sheet, kind of an executive summary of what you guys have in front of you. And I thought I might just go hit the highlights there on the, on the, the handout that you have. Basically, this is the same format as we looked at and what you guys saw in March of '22, when we began work on the elementary sustainability plan. So it's got a scope of services that specifically talks about what we would do for the facility condition assessment. Dr. Brandon did a great job of explaining kind of how we would tie in the existing information that you already have that we can utilize. It helps make our effort efficient and it helps us know what we need to update. I just want to say, part of my experience before you guys, before I came to working with San Angelo ISD, I actually started my work with school districts doing facility condition assessment. And our firm has done a ton of that over the last 25 years. The team members that we have, the consultant that we have in Terracan is also the same team members. I've, I've worked with some of those folks on facilities all over the country and, and some of them all over the world in support of the Department of Defense schools. So they've got a ton of experience, both in Texas as, as do we. So as you see, as we go through the process, just know that we've, we've got a team that's experienced working together. The facility needs assessment, you can see we've got it broken down into detailed assessment and what Dr. Brandon mentioned is the, the desk assessment. Basically, what that, that desktop assessment means is we're going to review the, the available plans. We're gonna walk, we're still gonna walk those campuses. We're gonna update the cost database that we utilize. We're gonna interview the staff there and Mr. Kennedy's group and then verify the conditions that were, were noted previously. And so in that way, we can still provide the same amount of detail and actionable information because we have a, a start to that. There's also the detailed portion, if you recall, and you can see at the bottom of page one, secondary facilities, we did not do a condition assessment of previously. We need to do a detailed, in our opinion, our recommendation, a detailed condition assessment of those facilities. It's about 1.4 million square feet or more than three times what the, the amount of square footage that we did previously. And again, that will cover everything, building systems to what we call a level three. So that gets the information about your mechanical, electrical systems, your interior construction, very detailed, just like we did previously on the, the elementaries. We're gonna look at the adequacy, the Texas state space standards. We're, we're gonna look at the capacity. You know, we did a capacity enrollment information for your elementaries. We would do the same thing for your middle school and secondary facilities. And then we would also look at your support facilities, as Dr. Brandon mentioned, with maintenance, food service, et cetera, as listed there on page one. Page two has the, kind of the summary of what we call the desktop. So you've got those facilities that I mentioned that we, we would update facility assessment information on. The second page, second page, excuse me, also lists what would happen in a long-range facility planning effort. So that includes the peer benchmarking. If you recall, we did that in examining some of your elementary facilities previously. And it's very important to us that, you know, stewardship with school districts is important. So giving you the information on square footage, operational costs and things like that. I think the district's done a great job using the information that, as part of the previous study to help implement some facility changes. And so this, this would be similar data that we could provide to you that would look at the entire district. And I think that's getting that picture is really important. Then there's also, as you recall, the long-range planning process involves doing visioning, brainstorming and doing concepts for how facility improvements might look so that we can focus on equity, operational efficiency, and looking at how to, you know, whether it's rightsizing campuses or whether it's looking at the cost of systems that may be becoming obsolete or wearing out. And then those that are projected in the future. One of the real powerful tools in assessment is being able to know not only what we need to fix now, but also what might be coming down the road. Because as you're making facility decisions, you need to know kind of what's coming. And so you need those pieces of information that we can help provide. One of the things I know we also have done on previous study is looking at the capital projects budgeting. And so in a very similar fashion, but we would, we could look at that on the entire district scale. And so that's what you see that, that kind of rounds out page two, in addition to the regular reports, just like we're doing tonight on the construction projects and what we did previously on your long-range planning. Finally, if the district does elect to go towards a bond plan, there are areas where we can support that. You'll see that that's a, when we get to the end of the handout, that's a, a optional task that you can elect to authorize when the time becomes, when that time comes and if it comes. And so that involves preparing materials for cabinet meetings, doing short-term and long-term project and prioritization exercises. And then documenting any of those things in a plan that we can, we can provide to the, the board and to the, to the public. So that is a very short and maybe too quick of an explanation on the, the scope. But page four has the schedule that we would propose. And again, focusing on the first task is the facility needs assessment. We're ready to begin that work. I know this is information item, but we could, we could start in June. And we're looking at, depending on the, the number of facilities, two to four weeks in the field. And there are some options there as well that you can see. So the idea is that in August, you would have a final condition assessment report that would have all the district facilities included in it, not just the elementaries. And then you can see the other activities, unless you, the, the other activities have, have a calendar scheduled in the fall and then on, beyond that, depending on how the district proceeds with their facility planning. And then you can see, I know that this is summarized in your board packet, but you can see a breakdown of our, the services, the proposed services. The facility condition assessment is at the top, the long-range facility planning in the middle. And then the project prioritization, what we, what we had called an hourly task is down at the bottom. And so that's an as needed and, and should the district elect to go with those services. And that can be decided later. So I think that covers most everything on, that's in the memo. And I know this is not for action tonight, but could I, could I answer any questions you guys might have on that?
So board team, any questions?
Just, I just had a quick question. So we had this done before I was, like before I got on the board for the elementary schools only. Is that correct?
Yes. So we did a, we did a, basically a, a desktop look at, at the, the elementary campuses that did have some work in 2008 bond, utilizing existing information. And we did a very deep dive on those campuses that did not have a very detailed assessment on those campuses that had not, had not received any assessment or any work. So that was what was done in the 2022.
So this just supplements the secondary schools mainly?
Yeah. This basically will handle, will take care of the secondary schools and the support facilities. So you can see that much lower level of effort to, and basically as we, the reason for doing this with the elementaries is to make sure that we're capturing the changes in the, the market, the construction market for what things are, are costing now. So we're, we're reporting apples to apples, both the current year needs. And typically, we'll report current year, next five, and then six to 20 years out so that you can see any of those large capital expenses that could be coming at a particular campus. It also allows us to look at, you know, individual buildings. So the, for example, at, at San Angelo Central, I think there's 13 buildings. So there may be, doing a detailed level of assessment like, like this will help you target funds where they might be needed the most at individual buildings rather than just looking at, you know, 480,000 square feet in one. You could, you can pick out individual buildings and, and dive into what, what's driving the renewal cost at that campus as well, or at that particular building.
And Kyle, just as a clarification, we had a very finite budget of what we had supplanted with extra dollars for projects when we engaged with Park Hill the first time. So we really looked at seven elementary schools very deeply. But we, as a district, we kind of gave them the schools that had not been hit in the '08 bond to look at tightly because we knew we only had a certain dollar amount to do anything with. And so that was where.
So the other eight or seven schools weren't, were just kind of more superficial?
More superficial, hey, like this is what you have and this is capacity. But it wasn't, we did not do as deep a dive on those schools because we knew we, we didn't want to do an assessment on something we didn't have any money to do anything with at the time.
Does this include a new demographic study or is that something we also need?
So in, in this case, the district would, would have, they have a demographer or the district's demographer would provide the additional or would provide updated demographics. But what we did the last time is we, we took the geocoded data without any names and so forth. And we were able to look at, so we would take that information from the demographer and, and the information from your district. And we could, we can, what we did before was look at the effects of facility improvements on attendance zone. And we can, real time, we have, that's part of the scope is to be able to, if there's a facility that might change in attendance zone or shift anything, we have the ability to do that within this. So yes, we do have, we can work with the demographer. I think the main thing is just to look at the trends in enrollment and, and, and compare that to capacity and then look at where the students are, are living now and what the trend is, where the, the kids are living in, in different attendance zones.
Thank you.
Just from, you know, what we're looking at here really is what is, what is the viability of doing something in the future? And really, when we're looking at our facilities and current enrollment and future projections in enrollment, how do we make sure that we are being good stewards of the properties we have, but also making sure that we are figuring out how to get the most dollars down to the children and the teachers that are actually doing the boots-on-the-ground work and trying to make sure that, I mean, we're not, the campuses that are costing us twice as much as other campuses, we have a real picture of that. And our public can then have a real picture of that. So we know where to move forward in the future. Only question I have for you, Alan, is on page three, I think?
Mm-hmm.
Services not included are asbestos and hazardous material studies. And I guess my only question is like, based on dating of buildings, when you come to pricing of what things cost, those things are already, those are built in?
Yes. And so the, that's a great question. The district has, gets a three-year, what we call an AHR update. And typically, there's, I always call it table four, but it's got a listing of those materials, those that are, that could be present, those that are encapsulated. And we can, we can incorporate that. And typically, we'll do that as we do that long-range facility plan when we know we might impact something that's been encapsulated. So we'll use that district information to, to do that. And I just, just to follow up on what you were, what you were mentioning, with condition assessments, what I've seen in, just in terms of the benefits, I know that you guys have been piloting and Mr. Kennedy's been doing piloting on preventative maintenance and seeing the success with that. This helps feed that. This helps identify things that, you know, safety and security-wise and life safety-wise. So that's a piece of this that's beyond just a normal condition assessment where we're looking at things like modernization. The value of having an architect or engineer out to look at things with the team, or having architects and engineers, when you start thinking about long-range facility planning, it's more than just looking at what building systems are wearing out, when things might need to be renewed or replaced. It's also looking at some of those things, knowing that in the future, if we do something, a renovation or addition or anything like that, that we're capturing those things that might be a cost impact, things that weren't present in the building when it was built, but things that we have to do or need to do to comply with new codes, new TEA standards and things like that. So there's a lot of benefits to doing these facility assessments beyond just identifying what's, what's wearing out, what might need to be replaced.
Any other board questions?
Mr. Wolf, I know you're looking at both the short-term and the long-term options that we have, i.e. short-term, what we have to do in the next few years, bearing the notice of the decrease in funding from the state and also the limited funds that we have available to do outside capital projects in our budget. As, as most people know, our, our budget is, is pretty strained as far as, as building, large building projects outside of the mention of a bond. There's just no way that the state provides us funding to expand or, or almost maintain our facilities to the best of our ability without that outside funding.
Yes, sir. And that's what we've seen, I think, in, in many of our clients and districts across the state, making, I was, I was working with one in East Texas that, that was trying to save and, and do projects without a bond. And they used to be able to do that, and there just wasn't. This is the, they just passed their first bond that, we're not sure how long it's been since they had done a bond. But the, I guess, just really hit home to me, you know, putting $200,000 or $300,000 away in their case wasn't going to be enough to do a capital project anymore. And so the, the, the majority of, of districts in the state, and I would say almost all of them now, have to do, to do a major building project now, do bond elections. And what, what we want to be sure is that when, as part of your, your benchmarking study, we're going to give you the information from your peers and looking at, so make sure we get everything kind of right-sized, which is the process that I think that we've been able to start in 2022. And that would be, we would like to give you recommendations and options that would help you continue to do that, that work that you guys have already done.
Right. We were fortunate to do the, the, the capital building projects right now through the, through the savings, through the maintenance and operation funds, and with the assistance of some, some ESTR funds through the pandemic.
That's correct. Yes. And, and I think that, but you're exactly right. I think that was a, I think we've seen, hopefully seen some of the benefits to that and, and the operational costs. But, but moving forward without the, the prospect of those funds on the horizon, I think it's, you know, at, at least considering those things and what might, how that might look. But we can, we can work with the information the district has and, and, and previous studies and its other consultants to help put together, I think, a, a long-range facility plan that, that will demonstrate good stewardship to the community. Yes, sir.
Any other board questions? All right, Alan, you've had quite the show tonight. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
We're going to move forward with item seven, which is consent items. We have donations. A, we have minutes from our April 8, 2024 pre-agenda workshop and our April 15, 2024 regular board meeting. We have C, which is consider bids for the child nutrition department for the 24-25 school year bakery products. Item D, consider bids for the child nutrition department for 24-25 school year direct delivery produce and high-volume items. Consider RFQ, excuse me, item E, consider RFQ annual financial audit. F, consider proposed amendment for the district budget general fund. And item G, consider superintendent's recommendations for 24-25 teacher and other professional contracts. Of note, all of these were discussed at our pre-agenda meeting, and all specifics to each of these can be found online on our board book. And do I have a motion to approve consent items A through G?
Make a motion to, make a motion to approve consent items A through G.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Dindel was quicker to the draw than Ms. Mizell Flint.
I'll let him have this one.
All right. Any further board comment on consent items A through G? All right. So I have a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Mr. Dindel. All in favor of passing consent items A through G, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. Motion passes 7-0. All right. Item eight is consider bills, accounts, and financial statements for the April 2024, for April 2024, excuse me. Do I have a motion for?
Move, move for approval for the aforementioned item.
And do I have a second? So I have a motion from Mr. Dindel and a second from Dr. Mills. Any further board comment?
Dr. Kingman, we discussed all these financial reports in our previous meeting, at the pre-agenda meeting. In addition to that, all these reports can be found online at our, on our SISD website under a tab named Financial Transparency.
All right. So I have a motion from Mr. Dindel and a second from Dr. Mills. If there's any further board comment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All against, say the same. Motion passes 7-0. All right. Next, we have item nine, which is consider certification of provisional, of provision of instructional materials 24-25. And Dr. Gomez is going to help us with that.
Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, and members of the board, we do this annually. The only difference is usually Mr. Henry is here, so we're trading out. So a school district is entitled to an annual allotment from the state instructional material funds for each student enrolled in the district. Districts are also required to certify annually to the State Board of Education and the Commissioner that students have access to instructional materials covering all the Texas essential knowledge and skills for all required subjects except physical education. Additionally, districts are required to certify that they protect against access to obscene or harmful content. SISD has completed the TEAC certification 2024-2025 survey, which includes a section to certify we meet this requirement. We sent this lengthy survey to you in advance, so you have this because it is quite long for all of the areas under reading language arts certification, mathematics certification, social studies certification, science, social, science certification, the Children's Internet Protection Act. And then additionally, for career and technical education, fine arts, health, technology applications, English language proficiency standards, and languages other than English. So we present to you this evening the full survey for approval and signatures so we can proceed with submissions to the Texas Education Agency.
Any questions for Dr. Gomez regarding the certification of provision of instructional materials survey?
This is something we do every year.
This is something we do every year. So with that, then, I need a motion to approve the certification of provision of instructional materials survey for the 24-25 school year as presented.
Make a motion, make a motion to approve the certification of provision and instructional materials survey for the 2024-2025 school year as presented.
I'll second.
So I have a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Ms. Mizell Flint. Any further board comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, say the same. Motion passes 7-0. All right. Item 10 is bid 24-007 bond planning services. And Mr. Henry is coming up to help us on that.
During our most recent facility assessment, many, many needs and projects were identified. To fund future projects, the school district will need to pass a bond. This proposal was prepared to hire a marketing firm to assist in communicating the district's future plans in all aspects of a successful bond campaign. Specifications were created and qualifications were requested from companies who, who perform this type of work. We received one quality bid from Ed Advantage. They have a 96% pass rate when assisting in bond propositions. Currently, the administration recommends contracting with Ed Advantage for bond planning services for a total of $129,500. Do you all have any questions over this?
And this will come out fund balance?
Okay.
So those, some of us have tried to pass bonds before, some of us have not, some of us have actually passed bonds. Yeah. There are some restrictions on what the district can and cannot say, and how district administration speaks towards our bond, et cetera. And so using a third party allows for people to get out and do the, spread the word regarding our bond, if we elect to do that, if we elect to go for a bond. And they help plan that as you're looking for at topics of wastely. What we're looking at is doing something with this and then with, with what we was presenting with Park Hill, I think, before to look and see, can we put a plan together that is something that, as a board administrative team, we can get behind and take to the public? Or is there not a plan, we don't know yet, is there not a plan that we can't get behind? But how do we address that? And so we're trying to get all our ducks in a row to do that. Any questions?
I guess, I guess I would, is, is this a time-dependent decision? I mean, is this something that has to be decided tonight? I guess we're, we're voting on it tonight. But is there a reason why it's specifically tonight?
I think, defer to Dr. Moran on some of it, but I think in our previous work with a bond, I think we sometimes, we didn't get all the pieces in place early. And I think then all of a sudden, you're trying to, yeah, scramble to hodgepodge things together in order to get, do it right. And I think as, coming up with a process that really has a chance of being productive, getting all the pieces in place early is what, you know, so they can help us with coming up with the committee, doing all the pieces along the way, and making sure that there is invested in this as we would be if we decide to pass a bond.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any questions? All right. Any questions for them?
And just like Dr. Kingman mentioned, it's, there's a lot of things we can and can't do, especially can't do, if we do go the route of a bond. There's a lot of things that we, not just administrators and board members, but even teachers. So getting someone like this is a big help, you know? It's like, I think they told us a long time ago, you don't want to actually try to sell it. I mean, because you can't. I mean, it's just hard. You have to have help. You have to have help. And there's a lot of things that we can and can't do. And this covers a lot of that that we can do. So.
And this is a different firm than we've used in the past?
Yes.
The last time we did it, we used the in-house architectural firms, or not, the architectural firm we used, they had an in-house advertising component, and we used that as part of our architectural firm. This would split that out. If we elected to move forward with Park Hill, this would split that out from their privy, have a second set of eyes looking at it.
Thank you.
And I think also, you know, by getting them involved early, if we look at how we, when we go to look at facilities, they help us with the fact that, getting them information out there that we've been able to refinance our bond over time and save millions of dollars for taxpayers by hitting interest rates correctly in order to refinance bonds over the last 20 years, and that initial bonds that were for X, we've actually been able to decrease the cost of those bonds to the public over time. And so even in just preparing for, is, can the community get excited about doing a bond for kids and for facilities for kids? They can help us getting that narrative out as well. Any other board questions? All right. So do I have a motion to approve contracting with Ed Advantage for bond planning services for $129,500?
Make a motion?
So I have a motion from Mr. Gallegos.
I was going to finish, I have my microphone on, I'm sorry. Just make a motion to approve contracting with Advantage for bond planning services for $129,500.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
So I have a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Mr. Dindel. Any other board question or comments? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. Motion passes 7-0. All right. We're now going to consider an efficiency audit for a VATRE or VADER. And Merle's going to help us with that, or Dr. Brandon's going to help us with that and explain acronyms for the public.
Good evening again. So the VATRE, the voter-approved tax rate election, you know, as we go into July and August, and we do bond planning, and then in August, we set and adopt the tax rate for the year. One of the things that is available to all school districts are what the state refers to as eight golden pennies. And they're referred to golden pennies because they're worth more than just your normal one cent, two cent on a tax rate. Board of trustees can approve up to five of the golden pennies without a voter tax rate election. But the other three do have to be approved by the voters. The board has been able to continue over time without going to the voters for those. With inflation at anywhere from 14% to 20%, we saw a 14% increase in employee insurance. We saw a 9% increase in property casualty insurance. It's kind of at that point. And the legislators in particular have put these in place for the benefit of school districts. So any school district not taking advantage of those, it, it really is in the best interest. And I know that is extra for the taxpayer, but the benefit really outweighs just what that one cent brings in. For example, three pennies on the tax rate will generate $2 million to the district. But that three cents from state aid as a golden penny will generate $4 million. So we're talking a $2 million investment from the public to the school district ends up being a $6 million to the, to the school district. And those are some of the funds that, you know, we're looking for at this day and time with rising costs. So, you know, our hope would be to offset that. There are some things that we could do if we are able to compress the tax rate again. We can take a look at our INS rate as we pay down bonds. There's an opportunity that we may be able to shrink our INS rate, basically to offset any tax back to the taxpayer. So as part of that, to start the process is you have to have an efficiency audit. The efficiency audit can be conducted by the auditor that you currently use, but it's a transparency piece for the taxpayers. That auditing firm comes in and looks at every aspect of finance in the district. And I believe it's on page seven. You can go through and see what those pieces of the audit are, but they compare us to peer districts, accountability rating, our financial rating, our demographics, our revenue, our expenditures. our demographics, our revenue, our expenditures, our efficiency audit procedures, district payroll, fund balance, staffing levels, teacher turnover rates, special programs. I mean, there's four pages of what comes out of the audit, and then that goes back to the voter. That gets published on our website, where it's very transparent to the taxpayer of how we run our business. And so that's the first step. Even if the board does not decide to do the VATRE, we do have to have the efficiency audit in place to begin that process. You see, I believe it was on page four, the Id Bailey, as being our current auditor, will do that audit for 12,000. And so we are asking tonight for your consideration to approve that as our first step in consideration of a possible VATRE within a few months from now.
Any questions for Dr. Brandon?
Dr. Brandon, I know we've looked at these, these golden pennies out there before, and again, there, there are three remaining that are valuable pennies as far as the state is concerned, and they are worth significantly more than a standard penny that exists out there in the standard MNO budget or the INS side. So a lot of districts, the way they, they justify this is that if the voters, again, will, will ratify either one, two, or three of these golden pennies, which produce almost twice as much as a standard penny does produce, that helps long-term with finance, and then all, also, a lot of times, we can look at our budget and also look at the INS pennies that we may have one or two extra, which are only paying at a standard rate, move those from, from INS to MNO, from interest and sinking fund to maintenance and operation, and so those pennies become much more valuable in the process of, of what they mean to a school. And then beyond that, the taxpayer sees no, no difference in what he pays long-term than what his tax rate is now. It doesn't increase his tax rate as long as we see that, that the interest and sinking fund money is available, that we can take those pennies away from that budget and move it into the MNO budget, and that's how a lot of districts justify or solve that, because it, again, it helps, tremendously helps the budget of a school, because these golden pennies are worth so much more than a standard penny out there.
Yes, sir. And that's true, and then, and the board has done an amazing job over the last 10 years, really since the, the last bond, of dropping the tax rate year after year, and so I would commend the board for those efforts. It's as low as it's ever been, well, back 15, 16 years right now.
19. When I got on the board, it was $1.50 for every $100, so now it's .64. So, yep, that was like 19 years ago. So, yeah, we've come a long way in that, so.
I just had a quick question. Have we had one of these recently, these audits?
We have not to that extent. I mean, every year, right, we have the audit for last year's books, to make sure everything's the way that it should be, and then report that to the general public. So this is kind of a deep dive into every aspect, from staffing to student programs, just really to see how efficient the, the district is.
And if I can make a comment, last year was the first year that schools were required to have the efficiency audit. And so for those schools that attempted or passed a VADER, I guess that's what we're going to call it, last November, that was the first time schools had to perform the audit for the, for the public. Prior to that, there was no efficiency audit required. So this will be the second cycle.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So I think one thing to make sure everyone understands, and that we're all talking about, is that this doesn't mean we're going to do anything, but the data we get from an efficiency audit could be valuable regardless. I think it'd be valuable to the board, I think it'd be valuable to administrative team, regardless of what we decide to do in the future. We do, it's kind of weird how the system is set up. We have to do the efficiency, my understanding is we have to do the efficiency audit by July. By, by July 5, it has to be assigned, but we don't know what our tax rates and everything are going to be doing to August, or what our taxable values are going to be doing to August. So we, there's going to be some, I, I think as a board, we've historically, other than with bonds, have worked to lower the tax rate for the public, and I think, I don't foresee that being a change in priority for this board, but what I do think is, we have to look at the realities of trying to move some of the cost of the business side of doing schools away from our taxpayers and to the state, if that's possible. And one of the ways to do that is to.
Tax ratification.
A tax, yeah, a VADER or a tax ratification, where all of a sudden, a $2 million investment turns into an additional $4 million. And so whether we end up doing it or not, I think we could get some great information, and then as we have that box checked at the point in time where we move, once we know what tax rates are doing and what appraisals are doing.
I was just going to mention, July 5 is the deadline to engage with an auditor, to have the audit performed.
Okay.
And then they'll provide that to the board, so that going into August and proposed budget and tax rates, you'll have that information.
So when is that final decision made for the, for the VADER?
Any district has to call an election prior to 78 days before the election, which is August 19. Any other, sorry. Ken, I know we have to call it before November 5, if we were to do a, a VADER, but like, would it have to be done? Would you have to put it, that election in November, in that election cycle, or could you do it in May? Or does it have to be done in November? That's what I'm asking. So.
November.
Yeah, November is the day. It used to be that you could do it in November or May. Now you have to do it in November. It's all in November. Damn dogs.
Any other board questions? All right, so do I have a motion to approve, or to give the superintendent authority to select an auditor to conduct an efficiency audit for a possible VADER in the November 5, 2024 election?
Make a motion, delegating superintendent to, the authority to select an auditor to conduct an efficiency audit for a possible VADER in the November 5, 2024 election.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do I have any further board comment? All right, so I have a motion from Mr. Gallegos, and a second from Mrs. Mizell Flint. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. 7-0. All right, announcements, we have a finance and pre-agenda workshop on June 3, 2024 at 5:45. We have a regular board meeting on June 17, 2024 at 5:45. We have team of eight training on June 24, 2024, at 5:15. I do not know of anything, executive session. We are not going into executive session tonight, and so with that, meeting is adjourned.